Okay, please note that council members Doyle and Rue are not present, the rest of are. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall there. Right now, we do have one council member that will need to leave, so we're going to skip down to five for the ordinances, so we have six people to consider ordinance approving the plat of Tinsenet Tizana Heights addition to the city of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
I move that said ordinance be given number 25-19, the title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
A motion to suspend the rules is not debated. Whoops, sorry, that's right, we do.
Bongard.
All right, we're missing our usual second.
I was waiting to see if somebody else would step up.
All right.
That passes six to zero.
Six to zero, so we'll move on, we'll read it three times tonight. Ordinance number 25-19 by number, only the first time, 25-19 the second, and 25-19 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 25-19 be passed and approved.
Second.
So this is a replat of some property that's owned by Gil Berkey. Gil Berkey's house there, about 10th and Dorsey Street, she has that lot, and then she has a lot back behind her property with this plat, she's simply combining those two parcels that she currently owns.
Any questions from the public? Your vote, please. And that passes six to zero. We will move now back to the regular agenda.
Thanks, guys.
See you, Mr. Alex.
You gotta go sit in another one.
All right. Tonight, we do have one proclamation, proclamation for the Big Give. Whereas Big Give Gage was established as a local day of giving, and whereas the Gage County Foundation has established Big Give Gage in a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever is meaningful to them, and whereas Big Give Gage is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and whereas it is fitting and proper during Big Give Gage and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Beatrice. Now therefore, I, Robert Morgan, Mayor of the city of Beatrice, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2025, as Big Give Gage Day in Beatrice, and urge all citizens of the Beatrice to recognize the tradition of philanthropy as it continues to improve and enhance the lives of all by promoting the common good. Witness my hand and the seal, and the official seal of the city of Beatrice this second day of September 2025, Robert Morgan, Mayor.
Thank you.
Is this mine?
So when you're talking about, I'm right.
All right. You gotta get back.
There we go.
Yes.
I'll be on there in a second.
All right. There, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
You go. Okay. I guess I'm going.
There we go.
Good luck, have a good one.
Well, thank you. Would never give that opportunity.
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the city for recognizing such a special day for all of Gage County. It's not just, you know, here in Beatrice, it is Gage County, or wide, or, gosh, sorry, Gage County wide, and we really do appreciate the recognition from the city. Starting in 2019, we raised around 144,000, last year was 484,000, going into year seven now, and we have raised over $2 million of funds that stay strictly here in Gage County to help better our citizens of the community. So we really appreciate the opportunity to have a proclamation for this day.
Yes, and on behalf, Don Vitroski, President of the Gage County Foundation, thanks to the mayor and the city council and the city administration for this recognition, because it is indeed an honor and a privilege to be part of something this large. I mean, seven years ago, we thought, ah, I don't know what we're gonna, how this is gonna happen, but now, seven years later, $2 million into the county, and with Beatrice's population, the heart of Gage County, it's a grassroots campaign, and so a lot of people contribute, and I would again encourage this year, everybody, you know, contact your family, have your friends contact friends. I mean, it's bigger than, it's bigger than Gage County. We bring in money from outside Gage, outside of the state of Nebraska. Remember your roots, remember the roots, because this is where everything started for a lot of us in our lives, and contributing back is just a way of giving to help keep going what we have. And it is so strong, and this county, I'm so proud of over the years, grew up in Gage County, and every year at this time, I'm so proud of what is able, we are able to accomplish together. So thank you for this recognition and your support, and nine days from now, we'll be down at the Vintage Venue, and maybe we can have a little hoopin' and holler, so join us for that.
I look forward to Don's holler.
And join us for that, but again, thank you for that, for this recognition, it means a lot to the foundation, and to the county, and to the support of the Big Give. Thank you.
And thank you for your leadership, Don.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council, they'll be enacted by one motion, there'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. Item A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on August 18th, 2025, is on file with the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of treasure report of claims in the amount of $1,20882.7. Approval of Boswell report of claims in the amount of $199,631.57. Approval of BPW report of claims in the amount of $1,242,899.84. Approval of the special designated license for Michael J's for an outdoor dance on September 27th, 2025, from 7:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. at 831 West Court Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Approval of the manager's application for Douglas E. Hank in connection with Walmart Incorporated doing business as Walmart, 2784, 3620 North Sixth Street, Beatrice, Nebraska. Item J, approval of change order number one, decrease in the amount of $16,153.20, and pay request number one in the amount of $66,155.62 to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for the 2025 Crowell Crossing Edition project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, approval of change order number one, decrease in the amount of $4,889 to Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for the 2025 Heritage Heights Edition project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Approval of pay request number one in the amount of $282,112.33 to Catherine Sons Construction Incorporated for the Mill and Overlay Paving Project 2025 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item M, approval of pay request number one in the amount of $31,093.50 to D.L. Lotman Excavating Incorporated for the Chautauqua Park Pickleball Terrace Seating Project 2025. Approval of pay request number one in the amount of $79,800 to McGill Asbestos Abatement LLC for the Dempsters Asbestos Abatement. Item O, award of the bid for the sanitary sewer lining and manhole rehabilitation project 2025 in the amount of $93,620 to Johnson Service Company Incorporated as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Resolution number 7612, executing a water tank maintenance agreement to retain Viking Painting LLC for the maintenance of the North Tower and South Tower as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item Q, resolution number 7613, approving a request for J. Husker Auto Club to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from Third to Sixth Street on Saturday, September 26th, 2026, between 12:00 p.m. and until 9:00 p.m. for a car show. Resolution number 7614, approving the request from Main Street, Beatrice, to close Highway 136, which is also known as Court Street, from Third Street to Seventh on Thursday, October 23rd, 2025, between 3:30 and 7:45 for the night of the Great Pumpkin Event. Anybody want anything pulled off?
I don't need anything pulled off, but I'd like a clarification on N and a clarification on P.
All right, so item N is the asbestos removal of the Dempsters location. McGill is the one who got the contract, their contract's about $154,000. They're asking for their first pay request, which is typical at a project, they do work for a period of time before they ask for some money. That project is moving along, they think it'll be done in about three weeks.
Okay. So P, the only clarification, I read it in the thing, how often do they do these? And is this for the interior of it or the exterior of it?
Both. So we've had a contract with USG for about 13 years, we just got out of that contract. Viking does similar work, in fact, they just did an inspection of our towers before they took over them, but they'll do the maintenance, both interior and exterior of our water towers, every year moving forward. There's kind of an ongoing schedule that they know this year's an interior inspection, next year's an exterior one, the following year is a repainting, so there's a standard schedule they work off of.
That was really my question, both of it. I'd like to note there that a number of years ago, I tried to convince the council to paint hot on one and cold on the other, but it didn't go, it didn't go anywhere, but I thought it was clever, so, thank you.
Mayor, how about on Q, is that date correct? Isn't it 25, not 26?
No, it's 26, they're actually a year ahead of schedule.
Wow. Okay, I was looking at the thing and it said 25, okay, thank you.
There are some planners.
That's ahead.
They have advertising, they want to make sure it gets in place by January, so they want to make sure it gets approved before then, so that's why they're an extra.
That is fabulous, that somebody is thinking that far ahead. I wish I could say I do that.
You could say that.
Anything else? All right, Mr. McLean.
I'm with you, items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
Your vote, please. And that passes, one, two, three, four, five, to zero. I forgot, we lost one. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is for the purpose of conducting the FY '26 and FY '27 budget hearing. That hearing is now open. Hannah?
Log myself in, in case we have any questions. Okay, so in front of you, and I do have public copies available as well, is the biennial budget for fiscal year '26 and '27. Last year, the city of Beatrice partnered with ClearGov to help publish our budget, so in the past, those documents that we've seen are usually just a spreadsheet full of a bunch of lines. Now we have this really nice budget document that I'm very proud of, that pulls in lots of different graphs, a much better visual aid as you're walking through some of this. There's a few different ways that it can be presented, so I also wanted to point out that the document in front of you, and the PDF that we're going to go over tonight, is a much more condensed version, so that it's more printable and a little easier to digest. If you're wanting to get more into the weeds, see some of those exact line changes that we've got, we have an extended version, if you will, available on our website, so that's on our homepage, you can click on that, and that will give you more details than what you've got in front of you. So let's get started on that.
Bob, Tobias, how do you want us to do this? She goes through this page by page, you want us to stop her?
Yeah.
I think that's...
I vote if you, as I'm going, if you've got questions, let me know, and I'll pause.
I just wanted to...
No, three.
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to get all the way, you know, doing the general fund, if you wanted to get all the way through the general fund, and then you wanted to talk about that, or if you wanted to do it page by page as she goes.
I would think it's easier when we're right on that page.
Yes, that's what I would probably prefer, and we can talk about that quick, too. So my plans are to hit our major funds tonight, so general fund, we'll walk through street fund, airport, sanitation, and then our three BPW funds, so those are what I'm going to spend the most time on, and then you'll notice on that table of contents, we have all of our other funds listed under other funds. I might just do a quick overview of that one and kind of move on, otherwise, we could be here for quite some time. So that's my plan there, and then we're just going to follow straight through the documents, so we'll kind of work through operating of each fund as we go down, and then we'll touch base on all of the different capital projects that we have planned, and then from there, I have some additional documentation that I want to go over as far as funding sources go, we can get into property tax requests and things like that, so we'll go over that at the end.
I just might have one clarification, too, since we do have three members that are absent, this is recorded, as always, and we are going to refer the council members to watch this, because we will not be going over this in full detail again in two weeks. So it's their obligation, since they missed, to catch up and ask questions with Hannah or Tobias, rather than going back and redoing everything that we've done tonight.
Sounds great. Oh, I forgot, I'm the clicker as well. Okay, so I'd like to start with page four, consolidated fund balances. I'm not going to touch too much on this right now, but I did just want to point out that this is a good place that's showing you the anticipated fund balances from '25, '26, and '27, and then it also gives you a change column that's showing you kind of those anticipated changes from '25 to '26. Up at the top, that's pulling all of the funds together as a whole, as we're all aware, all of our different funds live in their own funds, so while we're listing that as $34 million for 2025, there's the visual down below that's showing you which fund all of those belong to. So if we move on to page five, some of these first ones, the summary pages on all of the funds, as well as the comprehensive fund summary, I'm not going to get into too much tonight. Again, it's just a nice visual where you can have all of that information on one page, but we can dig into it a little better on the revenues and expenditures. Yeah, Ted?
Don't jump off of there.
Okay.
Intergovernmental revenues, and I know that this is a condensed version of this, years past, that was, explained what all of it is, give me the Reader's Digest version of what that entails.
And I'll get into that when I move over to revenues, if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Because we're going to keep chugging along, so that's what your page, page five and six are really showing you, oops, went the wrong way, are giving you just kind of a brief summary, and then the pages that I'd like to dig into a little farther, we're going to move along. So if we move to page seven, that's giving you revenues by object summary within the general fund, and so like Ted said, we can break down kind of what some of those are. Again, if you look at this on the website, for anybody maybe listening at home, you can see much more details on what's broken down into each one of those categories. So within taxes, we have sales tax, property taxes, and then we also have occupation taxes, so those are the big bulk numbers that we have within that one, and we'll get, I'm going to kind of jump around with that as well, we'll dig into more of the changes within the general fund taxes at the end tonight, so we'll get into what makes up that change there. The other big one, as Ted mentioned, is intergovernmental revenue, so that's where all of our, anything with the county, anything with any other partnering cities, and then as all of our federal dollars live within that as well. So those are some of the big changes between '25 and '26. We have a decrease in 911 funds with Richardson County and the city of Wyomar, so that's one of the big changes that we see. Oh, I'm sorry, city of Wyomar is still there, city of Crete. So those are some of our large changes in intergovernmental revenue. We also did see a decrease in our victim assistance grant between '25 and '26, and then we have several other federal grants that are ending. So in '25, we have our Safe Streets for All grant, we have our LED lighting grant, our tourism grant, so those were just one-year or either, or two-year grants that aren't moving forward into '26 and '27. So that makes up the bulk of your change there. Charges for services, that, lots of different things, any, within the general fund, we have administration, community development, police, fire, public properties, and the library, so there's lots of different things that can be considered charges for services. The big change that we have between '25 and '26 is we're proposing an increase to our ambulance rates at this point in time. Last rate increase there was in fiscal year '24. So those, that's what I wanted to kind of overview, what I wanted to talk about in the general fund as far as revenues go. Yep.
Help me with the ambulance, the increase in fees, is there, is there a national standard for that, is that, I mean, or is insurance, I mean, help me with that.
So, yes, right, there is kind of a national standard, there's also, you look at what insurance reimbursements are, you look at what Medicare and Medicaid reimbursements are, and then we also kind of look and see what other communities in our area are charging for those type of services.
So are we, are you, we, you, us, are we collectively, are we just charging what is the norm, or are we charging what, for lack of a better word, what we think we can get away with, or are you charging what you think makes us even?
We try to charge closer to what we can get for reimbursement rates. Those still don't cover our cost.
No.
Right, so we like to be a little higher, but reimbursement rate is what you're going to get paid back on, so you try to make sure you maximize it in those things.
Okay.
As we move on to page eight, some of the different categories there, personal services, so that makes up all of our different labor, health insurance, cost, retirement, things like that. The big changes that we're seeing there, the three different unions, IBEW Union, Fire Union, and the Police Union are all within the general fund, so increases there for labor range between two and a half to a possible three to four, so we have some increases there with our labor cost. We also have proposed, not proposed, we have increases for the health insurance funding that's going to be seen that transfers from each one of the funds, and that's based on, there's a set dollar amount per employee that moves from each fund into our health insurance fund, since we're, since we're self-funded. There's an increase in retirement percentage for sworn officers as well as firefighters this year, so that's another increase within personal services. And then the only other one I wanted to note is, this includes the addition of a part-time year-round public properties employee, so that's the only other change that we had within personal services for the general fund.
The changes in retirement were set by state statute.
Correct.
So legislature passed those a year ago or so, and require us to cover it.
There's also been some changes, too, with the way that they're calculated, and so that's also increased the cost as well. Other services and charges, again, that's one of those that there's a lot of different things, if you think about all of the different departments that live within the general fund, lots of things can fit in with that one. The, the big change that I wanted to point out is, this year, we are setting up an IT fund, so in the past, any IT expenses have just lived within each individual fund, now that we have a more, now that we have a director, an IT director, and several employees within that department, it makes sense for them to have their own fund. So those other services and charges, IT expenses are going to be moving to the IT fund, and each fund is going to be paying for a portion of the IT labor, so that's included in that other services and charges. And then the other big change that I had was contractual services, the dip in that one, again, goes back to the federal grants that are ending, so Safe Streets for All, tourism, the lighting grant, just one-time costs that we had in '25 that aren't moving forward to '26.
See?
Question was there?
No.
Good.
She and I had, she and I had a conversation about this earlier today, I just was pointing to this.
Yeah, yeah, no, sounds good. Okay, we'll move on from there. The next page, I'm not going to get into a whole lot, this one was nice because it shows you a breakdown by the different departments that live within the general fund. The one thing I wanted to point out, general administration, the reason that that one gets pulled all the way to the top, that includes any of our inner fund transfers, so the general fund, any dollars that they have that are being paid for out of the capital fund, that's where that funding comes from, is general administration, so.
I thought it was interesting, when looking at this, Tobias, maybe you can patrol suppression, right, that must be fire, I'm assuming patrol is police, communications is our 911 system, and ambulance EMS, so four of the top five in expenses really are protection services that people want. I mean, again, we wouldn't have the fire station we had if it wasn't for the fact that people are saying, yes, this is what we want to have. So when people are, you know, looking at, oh, too much taxes, too, you know, I think if you really drill down to what that is really paying for, hopefully, they are a little happier. I don't think anybody's happy about taxes, but...
Yeah. Okay, so if we move on from those, page 11 is giving you the fund balance for the general fund. So just a couple things that I wanted to point out with this one, we, we call our dollars a few different things within the general fund, so unassigned, restricted, assigned, and committed. Your assigned dollars are going to be lodging tax dollars in your EMS reserve funds. Committed in the past was for our cares funds, and those are being spent down in 2026. And then restricted are the funds that are restricted for the gas plant that will be here for quite some time. Below that, I have, you'll see there's a section that says unassigned fund reserve target levels. So we've talked, I think you guys have talked a little bit about putting in a cash reserve policy. So on all of the fund balance pages, I tried to add a note that talked about what we are proposing for that cash reserve policy, and how our end for '26 and '27 fit within those ranges. So that gives you the range, if we were looking at a 25% to 50% of total expenditures, less the internal fund transfers in the capital projects, where we would want that unassigned dollar amount to be.
So Tobias or Hannah, lodging tax, I understand, the EMS reserve fund, is there a cap?
Yeah. No, so every year, that's something that's just built in, we do $100,000 of general fund dollars that are reserved for ambulance EMS capital, and so any dollars that are ambulance EMS capital come out of that reserve, but no, there's, there's no cap, just an internal.
There's a $100,000 base in there, so...
Yep.
Could you put your phone down?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I kept hitting it with my pages when I moved over, so...
And then your page 12 is just a visual of that unrestricted fund balance that we just talked about, so you'll see between '26 and '27, we do dip into that three-month reserve.
And Tobias, what do you have to say about that, anything?
Obviously, if you're looking at this graph, first off, you can notice when COVID hit, right? There's a substantial inflow of federal dollars during the COVID time period, you can see where we operated before COVID, and we're getting back to those. Hannah's a little more nervous about it.
Yeah, I mean, I will admit, '27, I don't like where '27 ends, and I think that there's going to have to be additional conversations that are had around '27 before it gets adopted in '27.
Is she talking to you or us?
I think it's both.
It's a collaborative effort.
The answer there is yes.
But yes, I mean, obviously, it's a downward trend, that we need to try to figure out what's behind that, and what's pushing that, is it a one-time capital expenditure?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe it's okay, if it's an ongoing systemic operating cost, and that's not sustainable long-term, we believe it's more of an operational issue at this point, and so as Hannah indicated, we're going to have to have some more conversations about some way that maybe we alter how we're handling things today, moving into future years, to be able to provide the services at a reasonable cost that people enjoy today, much like the police and fire that you indicated earlier.
Right, exactly, and some of those really aren't, I think, aren't the extras, I guess, what most people would say would be extra, those are what we feel are essential.
They're extra until you need them, right?
I know, when I dial 911, I want to have somebody show up, and they have before, so I appreciate that, so, but it did make, you know, I kind of circled that, because I thought, ooh, and if that is trend, then we need to, you know...
We've identified several areas that we believe we could address in '26 and '27 to smooth that line back out, and we'll be certainly... And we'll be certainly coming back, have some further conversations with you.
Okay.
Twenty-six, we feel good.
Yeah, twenty-
Twenty-seven, we know we got to make some changes.
Okay. Okay, if there's no other questions with general fund at this time. And again, we'll get into capital and taxes in a different section within the general fund. So moving on to-
The only thing I would-
Yeah.
I would put a plug in, several have talked and thought about the cash reserve. And I think it's just, you know, as we think about the three to six months, that's what's recommended, I think, even from the auditors. But, you know, we don't have that in place, and I think that's just a safe thing for us to put in place for years to come. And, you know, as you look at twenty-seven, we're not immune to a lot of the issues that any business is going to have to face, you know. Let's face it, one of the major issues is health insurance. And that is going to continue to increase astronomically. And so that's one of the things that we will have to study, how we still provide a great package for our employees because they're worth it at a cost that is affordable. Sorry.
Oh, that's great. So again, not going to spend too much time on the summary pages. So page thirteen is just giving you a nice visual of where we're anticipating street fund. Quick plug for the twenty-seven column that looks way higher than everything else, that's where your raise grant comes into play. So just, just as you're looking at that year. But let's, I'm going to skip a couple of pages here, let's move on to page-
Hannah, back up, the twenty-seven thing, it only goes up to ten million dollars, the raise grant's twenty-two point two million.
It covers several years, it'll be over a-
Okay.
Yep, yep.
They're not going to give you a check all-
I don't think they're going to give it to me all upfront, so we'll probably take a couple of years on that one. So I want to move us to-
Hannah?
Yeah.
That may, depends if the state handles all of that financing.
We don't see any.
It may not hit our books at all.
So we had that happen with the trail, I wasn't before my time, but I believe that was the water park trail. That was federal dollars, and none of that ended up hitting our books, all went through them.
I don't remember.
Yeah.
She's correct. She's right. I don't remember.
So that's a good point, we might not see any of those actually on our books.
So for right now, it's a placeholder, is that kind of what you're saying? Because we're just not quite sure how it's going to all work itself out.
And I think it's better to have it in-
I do too.
Than to-
Right. I do.
Amend our budget for an additional ten million dollars.
Yes, I agree.
Let's just have it in there. Okay, so if we're on page fifteen, again, this is giving us our revenues by object summary. Same thing as the general fund, your taxes here are going to be sales tax dollars. Intergovernmental revenue is anything that might have to do with federal dollars or the county. We also have our highway allocation dollars within the street fund. So any other additional state funding is going to be in that intergovernmental revenue. My changes I wanted to point out for that one, the Fifth Street and the Ellis Street grants that we have going on right now, those are in fiscal year twenty-five. So that's why in twenty-six, you see a decrease within intergovernmental revenue. And then you see it go back up in twenty-seven as we start that raise grant. Do I have any, oh, charges for services, I just wanted to point out quick, in twenty-five, we have the Zollner ditch, so that's a little higher in twenty-five. Twenty-six and twenty-seven are kind of like our base budget with those. We do have projects that come in that could increase that. And then miscellaneous revenues in twenty-five, the schools portion of Thirty-third and Lincoln is included there. Otherwise, we don't usually have dollars that, that roll through there. And then your other financing sources was the bond issuance that we did this year for the two school sites. Move on to expenditures within the street fund. Kind of same story again, as we talked about in the general fund. Personal services, we have a two-and-a-half percent increase with the union wages, and then also an increase to that health insurance funding. Other services and charges, again, as we talked, the IT expenses are moving to the IT fund. So we're seeing each, each one of the funds will have an increase for IT. And then your inter-fund transfers that you have in twenty-twenty-five, originally, the mill and overlay project that we have going on right now was budgeted for in the street department. It's a CDBG grant, so it has to be run out of the CDBG fund. So rather than seeing those expenses come out of capital, they're going to be moved down as an inter-fund transfer into the CDBG fund.
Why doesn't that have to go to the street department?
Because it's a CBG grant, and so we have a separate fund for those, for those mechanisms.
Okay.
My check has to say CDBG.
Okay. Well, feel, when I ask him something, feel free to answer.
Yeah, I'm going to.
If I should be, if I should be asking you, feel free.
Okay, as we move on to page seventeen with the fund balances, again, we have the twenty-five to fifty percent. Within the street fund, we're proposing twenty-five to fifty percent of total operating expenses as the reserve target levels. So that gives you the target level as well as the cash on hand that we're looking at there. And we'll get into capital later, later on in the presentation. No other questions on street, we can move on to airport. Airport fund, if you're looking at the summary with twenty-twenty-five, that is our taxiway reconstruction project. And then in twenty-twenty-six, you have your T-hanger project. And then after that, maybe they'll level back out to those operating. But so some big capital projects going on there. Skipping page nineteen and moving on to page twenty. So within the airport fund, all of their revenue, or the bulk of their revenue, comes from charges for services and miscellaneous revenue. So the hangar rents, their farm leases, that's where the bulk of their, their revenue comes from. You'll notice taxes fall off in twenty-three, so once the airport became part of the city of Beatrice, rather than their own authority, they no longer had property taxes, so no taxes go towards the airport. Their intergovernmental revenue, it has to do with all those capital projects, so they have federal dollars coming in for the T-hanger project as well as their taxiway construction. Most of the time, those are a ninety-ten split between federal and then what the airport's share is. Other financing sources, this is something that we'll talk about as well in electric, water, and WPC and sanitation. The way that depreciation was presented last year with this new software really wasn't the way that we should have done it. So I have some kind of corrections between the way it was presented last year and the way it will be presented going forward. So within those funds that do show depreciation, within other financing sources, we have, we're backing out the depreciation and doing kind of a revenue adjustment, so that when you get down to cash, you're showing the true cash and not, not less what the depreciation is.
Hannah, don't run off on the-
Yeah.
So the airport thing, and we're just getting, we just got that this year, and so I don't understand it as well as the other stuff. When you talk about the taxes on this, there's, you know, there's a blank plane for taxes, but it was my understanding that airports get a certain amount of funding from the Fed for the amount of fuel, or the amount of passengers or whatever, I mean, there's a, there's a plan for that. We don't get that because of the size of our airport?
I'm not aware of those funding sources that are out there, but no, we don't receive those. As Hannah indicated, we sell our-
Sort of like a federal stipend, or?
Yeah, so, so part of your plane ticket, part of every time you buy, every time an airline buys gasoline, or aviation, not gasoline, aviation fuel, but part of that tax goes to the airport that they take off from or they land from. And I, both cargo and passenger planes. It's my understanding from my pilot friends, so, and family that are pilots, and I just wondered why we don't get that.
We receive an allocation every year that the state holds until you do a federal project. I don't know if that's where that money goes to. But a lot of times, the state holds those dollars until you have some type of project. But no, we don't receive any other type of funding source based upon number of passengers that fly in and out, or touch, touchdowns, takeoffs, or any of those types of things.
It's a, it, from what I understand, is what I've, what I've been told, it's a number of takeoff and landings, and a number of, you know, people that fly out, that kind of thing. And I know we don't have regular passenger planes, but we do have people that fly in and out of our airport, so that was my question, so thanks.
Yeah, no. That one I don't have an answer for, so, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But I made myself a note, and I'll ask Dennis about it.
All right.
Okay, if we move on from revenue sources with the airport, we can move on to expenditures, we're on page twenty-one. So same thing, personal services, we're looking at a two-and-a-half percent increase with, within the unions and the non-union. Increase to health insurance funding. And then FY twenty-five, you notice a little bit of a spike there, that included, they had two different retirements in fiscal year twenty-five. So there's always a little bit there once we pay out vacation and sick leave. Supplies, in fiscal year twenty-five, we see a decrease in fuel expense due to the taxiway project. So they've had a portion of that shut down for some period of time, so just less cost this year. And then within their capital outlays, and again, we'll, we'll go over capital later, but fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six include the taxiway reconstruction and the T-hanger construction projects. And if we move on to their fund balance, I show the fund reserve target levels, we're looking at twenty-five to fifty percent of total operating expenses for the airport. Moving on to the sanitation fund, page twenty-three shows you a summary of what we're looking at. I'll get into twenty-twenty-seven here in just a second while we're seeing a spike there. So if we move over to page twenty-five, it kind of cuts into twenty-four too, I'm sorry. Twenty-twenty-four is showing you their charges for services. Obviously, theirs are true, they're charged for their service. So picking up, that would be your in-town, out-of-town villages are all within there. We are not proposing a rate increase at this time for fiscal year twenty-six or fiscal year twenty-seven for the sanitation fund. And then miscellaneous revenues, fiscal year twenty-seven includes funds for the possible sale of the current Mars site. So as the new landfill opens, Mars will move to the old landfill site, and we'll lease that out. So then we have the old Mars site that will then be available. That'd be a great source of revenue that we could sell, and then use those proceeds to pay off the rest of their debt, the rest of their bonds. So that's what we have proposed for twenty-twenty-seven. And then again, you'll notice in their other financing sources, we have a change there as I show that revenue adjustment for depreciation. On to page twenty-six, as we go over their expenditures by object summary, again, personal services, about a two-and-a-half percent increase. We also have a change in the health insurance funding. And then the only other big change for theirs that I wanted to notate was the debt service. You'll see a large increase in twenty-seven, that's if we would sell the Mars site and be able to pay off the rest of their bonds. And then page twenty-seven is giving you that fund reserve target levels for the sanitation fund. We're thinking fifteen to thirty percent of total operating expenses plus the capital expenses, since the bulk of their expenses are going to be a new truck.
It's, can, in twenty-six, that is really low, can-
We have a little bit of a higher capital in twenty-six.
Okay.
Normally, we just have one, if he's going to buy capital, it's a truck.
Right.
In twenty-six, he has a different sized truck, and we're trying to fit two of them in. So cash does dip a little in twenty-six, and then continues our projectory in twenty-seven.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Any other questions on sanitation?
So the two trucks that he's got in sanitation, one is a roll-off truck. And the other one is instead of a normal twenty or twenty-five yard truck, it's an eleven-yard truck, which does not require a CDL to drive. So those are the two trucks he's looking at in next year.
Okay, moving on to BPW. So you'll notice I don't have a lot of pages in here that go into BPW. So again, all of the, if you look at it on the website, that's going to give you a lot more breakdown with BPW. So I tried to fit as many notes as I could on this one, just so we could talk about it within the first few pages. So on there, you're going to see the fund reserve target levels that we will talk about once whichever meeting we do, the cash reserve policy app. But those are where we're projecting those numbers to be. We move on to page twenty-nine, that's giving our revenues by fund. So again, one of the big changes that we're seeing is that depreciation that we've talked about. So just the way we're representing a revenue adjustment to pull out that depreciation. Within the electric fund, fiscal year twenty-five includes three-and-a-half million dollars for bond proceeds. And then we also didn't have all of the dollars accounted for, for the data mining sites based on the amount of electricity that they're using and the revenue that they're generating. So those were just light, you'll see an increase with those. FY twenty-six includes an implementation of an infrastructure fee. And I'm not sure what that will be per, whether it's a two-dollar or a three-dollar, I don't know what the dollar amount is, but it'll be about eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in revenue. And then in twenty-twenty-seven, we're proposing an electric rate increase that will also generate about eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. So, yep.
Annual.
Yep.
The large surface contract, that was the data mining, okay.
Yep.
And I believe that we're looking to have John Kraske here, maybe the next meeting, to talk about his rate study he's doing and the proposed increases on the electric side.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Because, of course, those are just proposed because we haven't-
Yeah.
Done anything yet about that, yes, okay.
Within the water fund, the bond proceeds that came in for the back truck were just a little higher than what we had originally had budgeted. So there was an increase of about a hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand dollars there. And then for fiscal year twenty-six, we are proposing an infrastructure fee increase of two dollars. And then WPC, grant proceeds of two million dollars is for their grit construction project. And we're going to see the bulk of those funds come in twenty-six instead, so that's just a rebudget to twenty-twenty-six. And then we're also proposing an infrastructure fee increase of two dollars there as well. And once we get into capital, we can maybe talk about why we're thinking those infrastructure fees would be needed in all three of those funds. So between pages thirty-one and thirty-two, depending on how you're wanting to look at it, again, we're, we're fixing the depreciation that wasn't there last year, so you've got a bit of an increase there in all three funds as we show that depreciation. In the electric department, fiscal year twenty-six, we're showing the spend down of the, of the bond proceeds. So you're going to see high cash in the electric fund in twenty-five as those three-and-a-half million dollars sit. And then fiscal year twenty-six, they're all going to come back out as those capital projects come out. Fiscal year twenty-seven, we have additional expenditures for the power generation facility. And again, we can talk about that when we get into the capital section. And then for, no, no big changes for expenditures for water, other than the depreciation that we talked about. And then for WPC, for fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six, it's really the grit project. Total project cost is about five-point-two million dollars, so large cost there. Questions on W, or, excuse me, questions on BPW as a whole? And again, we'll get into capital here in a little bit.
Tobias, because of our approval of what the WPC went through and our permit that we were given, are we able to just kind of continue our fighting off little pieces of, of-
Yes.
What may be necessary down the road?
Yes, those permits are five years, we're currently in, I think, year three of that permit cycle. Right now, we're not seeing any changes so far in what our effluent levels can be. We'll know again here in another two years, but, so yes, we continue to make improvements inside the facility that regardless, whenever we make the change to the plant itself, those pieces that we're putting in place will still be able to be viable moving forward. This particular one is grit, it's been out there for some time, and it's expensive.
It's all expensive. So, thanks, David, for bringing this up, because I wanted to ask, I looked, when I looked at this, I looked at the two years prior to this. We seem to be mining bits and pieces of stuff for the WPC. So my question is, and you answered part of it when you answered, David, that we're buying stuff that we can use in a different facility if we need to. But my, I guess my question is, are we just patching things just to make it work? Or are we actually building something for the future?
We're actually building something for the future. So one of the things we did in there was change out the pumps in the, in the headworks area. And so we put in the right-sized pumps that we'll need for our new facility that still work for today. Grit is changing out the old system and putting in a whole brand-new system. We did the de-watering system, we put in a new system there that works. So we're not just simply patching things as we go, we are building them to handle our growth in the future.
And, and with that, the, the things that we're buying, I know that they all die at a different rate, but what's the life expectancy of this stuff?
Again, it just kind of depends what you have, some of it-
Well, the, like, use the example given.
So the grit has been in there since its original from the early eighties.
Okay.
So you mean you can get something that lasts forty years? Well, the new grit, it may not, still may last twenty years. Those would be questions I've asked James for certain on some of those.
But they're long.
They're long-term.
Long-term investments.
The de-watering, you put two of them in there, and so you keep the hours down on both of them as you run that facility. So yes, they're long-term investments that'll be able to be used with the new plant whenever we decide to move forward on that.
Okay.
As we move forward, these are those other fund categories that we talked about. So you notice the pages in front of you are more of just the summary pages. Additional information you can find in the online version. So you'll notice with EBA fund, we're on page thirty-four. You'll notice a steady incline there, we, you can see the projection. So that's what Mayor Morgan was talking about, that health insurance funds are gonna be one of the biggest things that continues to see the large increase in expenses. Yeah, as that fund trends forward. And just to give a little more information, so we're self-funded, each employee, we have, we do an annual cost. Is Calvin behaving back there?
He's doing good.
Okay, good job, Calvin. Each, each employee has a set cost as an annual cost. And then each fund, the amount of employees that they have, that's how much each fund funds the employee benefit fund every year. That was a lot of the word fund, but that's how it works. So name of the game with EBA fund is that we're seeing a steady increase in those costs. Keno Fund, not much to talk about here. Fiscal year twenty seven, you're seeing the trail project come through and kind of as Tobias talked about with the RACE Grant. We're not really sure how much of that cost is actually gonna be seen within the fund, but it's better to have it in there since we're not really sure how that will be represented. But that's, that's our big cost there. CDBG, at this time fiscal year twenty five, we're wrapping up the Mill and Overlay project. We have downtown revitalization, we have owner-occupied rehab that's getting wrapped up as well. And then we also have the comp plan budgeted in there. And then twenty seven is kind of to be determined at this time, but Tobias always finds a CDBG grant, so.
Comp plan, I hadn't written myself a note.
Yes.
One of my things here, so we, the one we were working off of, we did in oh-six?
Oh-one.
Oh-one. We revised it in sixteen.
Correct.
And now we've set a little bit of money aside. What does that do? Does that, does that revise the revision?
No, it would be a whole new plan.
Okay, well, you can't do it for what you've got budgeted, so how much does it do?
So it depends, we got, last time we looked at doing a new comp plan, we got two quotes. One was significantly higher, the other one was in the price tag that we have budgeted. The grant will cover, I think, about fifty thousand dollars worth. And then we're on the hook for the additional ten to fifteen thousand, kind of depending on where those numbers come in at.
Okay, so if we don't get the grant, we're not doing it?
Correct.
Still needs to be done. Grant or no grant, still needs to be done.
And that's something maybe with, within, I don't know, you could look at some different funding. If that's a real project that we want to get pushed through, but the way it's budgeted, correct, no.
Is that what I'm leaning over here and asking if I'm talking to you or Bob or Tobias again? Yeah, she was a pretty quick no.
No, it's not the way it's budgeted.
Okay.
Half you one of those we come back to and say, okay, you want to do A or B? You have money to do one or the other, which one you want to move forward with?
We, we collectively as a body have a responsibility to put a roadmap out. The, the five of us that are here tonight are not always going to sit here.
Yep.
Okay.
I like that.
I don't.
I tilted my windmill, I saw that nod over there, Dana, thank you.
Your debt service fund accounts for the fire station bonds. So that's the cash that's always sitting in here is the sales tax dollars that we're generating for the fire station bonds. They're trending a little ahead, a little ahead of the actual bond payments that we do each year. And then debt service fund would also have the airport bonds, and those payments start next year. We, page forty, we have our information technology services fund. So this is our new fund that we're starting in twenty twenty six to better account for all of our IT expenses. So you'll see labor for our director and our three employees. Some other services and charges pulled in for things like diode and phone service, things like that. Some supplies as well as capital, yeah.
Tell me again how we're funding this?
So it actually works the same way as our employee benefit fund. So each fund puts in a, takes a portion of their money and it gets siphoned into the IT fund and then all of the expenses roll out of there.
So will we see those like we do on expenses for the employee benefit fund, we actually see them, right?
You'll, I guess that's a good question. I, at this point in time, I anticipate you'll see all expenses that come out of IT.
Okay.
But you'll also see the expense that rolls out of each fund monthly to fund it as well.
And how do you decide?
Yeah, it was a lot. So I worked on some different spreadsheets that broke down, first off, who pays for what right now? So all of the different telephone services that we have spread out through all the different funds, they're all now gonna come out of this one. So I broke down who's paying for that right now, which fund is it coming out of? I did a breakdown based on each one of the different employees for where is their time spent? So one of the IT employees is with BPW all the time, a hundred percent BPW. The city wouldn't ever ask him questions. But then he has, we also have our IT help desk person who's gonna be much more broken down and all funds need to be paying for him. So there was some calculations done to see what fund needs to be paying what amount.
Yeah, I would say that this is probably a very smart move. I mean, we did that at the college because we had it spread out over who knows how many budgets. We had people that were spending, a perfect example were printers. You know, they have money, so they go out and they buy an inkjet printer. Well, if anybody's had an inkjet printer, how much ink do you go through? You go through a lot. And so by consolidating and having an information technology services fund, the tech, basically, the IT guys know what to buy. They know how to standardize, so you don't have ten different brands. And at the end of the day, it really paid huge dividends for them, even instituting a few things that some people didn't like. I figured it was exercise. We were able to do some copier printer machines where you'd send it, so you didn't have a printer in each person's office. Which was fine by me, because, you know, I can get out of my chair and walk across the room and pick something up that three other people can use. And so I think this will pay huge dividends over the next few years and also standardize and bring in consistency across the entire city of Beatrice and BPW.
No, I, I think it's, I think it's a very good idea. I just, it gives me a headache when I think about how you decide who pays what and how much comes out of each area.
What is IT? What's IT, what's OT?
Correct, we talked about, I learned what OT is, and each department has OT. That all stayed within the departments, there was a lot of conversations, yeah. And I'll point out, too, definitely just a roadmap with IT. I do think this will change, but we have to start somewhere.
Right.
We have a few dollars in the Norcross Horner Fund.
What is that?
Tobias, what was the word?
It is a donation that we received years ago for indigent people to do some type of service in the community. I keep trying to get Hannah to just spend the last hundred dollars and close the account out.
Earn a hundred dollars in interest every year, but yeah, so we do need to figure out something to do with that seven thousand dollars.
You, Dana, I talked about this earlier, David, if you really want to know, get ahold of Lorraine. She'll tell you exactly where it came from.
You're right, she'd be a great resource on that one, yeah.
Well, I, because I, because I did it earlier. A dozen years ago, twenty years ago, I had the same question and I asked Lorraine and I've forgotten. So she does have the answer, but ask her, she can explain it.
Well, if we could spend it, maybe it'd be nice to not have it show up.
Page, yeah, I agree. Moving on to page forty-three, we do have some special assessments outstanding for some paving projects that we did back in twenty twenty-two. Those will continue to have revenues come in. I believe one is seven years and one is ten years. So we'll continue to see those trickle in and ultimately, those funds will go back to the street department. Economic development, no change in funding for them. But we are seeing some changes in the way that expenditures are rolling out as we have the Hoppy Development loan with the Kensington. So you'll see an annual, annual cost there. The other thing I wanted to point out with economic development, as you're looking through this, every year we budget for a million dollars in bond revenue and a million dollars to match in capital expenditures. That's just in case we would have some large project roll through. We actually used it when we purchased the.
Schwarzkopf grant?
Yeah. Schwarzkopf.
Schwarzkopf.
When we purchased that land. We were able to just do that without having to re-budget anything, it just fit within that million dollars. Nine-one-one surcharge fund, not much to say there. Our state funding is increasing a little bit in twenty-six and twenty-seven. Most of the funds that flow through the nine-one-one surcharge go back into the general fund to pay for dispatch labor. A portion of dispatch labor. Your CRA fund is where we collect revenue and expend that revenue for all of our TIFF projects. So TIFF projects total were up to about nine hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that go back to TIFF developers in twenty twenty-six. Let's see.
TIFF, so back to TIFF. Do we have any huge ones that are just about to fall off?
The next significant one that's supposed to fall off would be the Hatchery, and I believe that one is about five years out.
That's the closest one.
Significant size, yes.
Aaron, I'm gonna have you switch to that other document. Do I need to do it? Yep. So I'm gonna move us to page, I don't know, fifty-one, fifty-two, we're gonna get into some of the different capital projects. And this might bounce around a little bit. So up on the screen, I've pulled out, actually Amanda did. Amanda's are great, she can make anything look like the city of Beatrice. She does a very nice job of branding everything for us. So the screen will pull out some of the major projects that we have going on. I know this list can be a little hard to see, much better viewed online. So if you get a chance to look at capital pages in the online budget, I would definitely take some time to look through those. So some of the major projects that we have going on between twenty-six and twenty-seven. So we have two hundred thousand dollars budgeted from twenty-six, twenty-seven. I'd have to look and see how many years total. Do you remember Tobias?
I'm looking for you.
For demolition at Dempster's, so we do have.
Five years.
Five years. Of two hundred thousand dollars a year pulled over to Dempster's demolition. We have the Homestead, Homestead Trail that we talked about, the city share for the three hundred and ten thousand. Again, we're not sure how that's going to look on our books, but that's the placeholder for the trail extension. Playgrounds at Heritage Heights and Stoddard Site, that is part of the, that's not RACE Grant, RCRP. That's part of the RCRP grant, so we have grant funds available for that. Field Eight at Hannibal Park for FY twenty-six, we have RCRP revenue available for that. We are also using lodging tax dollars, donation from girls softball. Am I missing any?
Grant from tourism.
Tourism.
And then you have the sponsorship money for.
Oh, yeah, all of our sponsorship fees, yep. So different funding sources available for that one. We have a proposed pickleball slash RC track. So we currently have a grant out, what's that grant, Tobias?
Land Water Conservation Fund.
The Land Water Conservation Fund, grant application in right now for the pickleball courts. So we have money set aside to match that grant. If that grant wouldn't be available, then we can use those funds for the RC track instead. So one of those kind of either or to be able to fit that in the budget. In fiscal year twenty-six, we have some money for the duck pond. We also have trail crossing enhancement out at Lincoln Street, which I think is a great project. I'm excited for that one. Was that grant funding?
We found a grant that might work for it, but otherwise, we're playing.
I think at this point in time, it's just general fund dollars on that one. Fiscal year twenty-seven, we are hoping we finally get the new fire engine in. So this one, I believe, was originally budgeted in either twenty-three or twenty-four, I'd have to go back and look. So that's one that just continues to be carried forward. We are proposing to use, we're able to use the sales tax dollars that we're collecting right now for the fire station. So we would like to use some of the, a portion of those funds on the fire engine. I think it'd be a really great revenue source to use on that. Without that, we would have to go out for a bond issuance, so you would be bonding dollars where we could just be using those sales tax dollars instead and just not pay off that bond as fast. And then we also have an ambulance coming in in fiscal year twenty-six. That's where we talked about that EMS reserve fund that we have, where we pull a hundred thousand dollars each year. So that reserve fund will be built up, that'll cover half of the four hundred and fifty. And then we also have CARES funds available, so that'll cover the other half of that one.
Did I see the duck pond, that was Keno? Is that correct?
Yep.
Keno?
Yeah, I believe so.
Let's look, I believe it's Keno. If you go back into pages like sixty, sixty-one, those.
I'm pretty.
Give them all by the revenue as well.
I'm asking a question, but I think I don't.
Yes, that's not, you are correct, yes.
And on the fire engine, that's not, we are just waiting in line, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
And waiting, waiting. Okay, so don't go anywhere here.
Yep.
So the Dempster's thing, a little close to my heart here. So you've got a million dollars over the next five years. That doesn't do what you want to do. It, or it doesn't.
Doesn't do what you want to do.
Doesn't do what anybody in the community wants to do, you're with me, too. You just don't want to spend it like I want to spend it, I get that. So, but my question is this. Is that the plan is to just pay for this over twenty, take it down over the next twenty years?
Well, I think if we're looking to use just simply local dollars. I don't know of another mechanism to do other than the slow and steady pace, take it a little bit down each year. We'll continue to look for grant funding. Whether that is the Brownfield grant that we'll apply for again this year, the state came up with a grant that we're looking at pursuing as well. I mean, if there are some other opportunities, we'll look to accelerate that demolition. Otherwise, we've looked at it, I don't know of a way to do it in our current budget to do it any faster.
Because it really would just be coming out of your general fund dollars, there's not another pool, so to say, to be able to pull those out of.
I get that, it's just that I look at the two hundred thousand and go, hmm.
I know.
And it, it, it's a, don't get me wrong, two hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. But you're, when, you know, we've, we've looked at this and at one piece, for one of it, just to take, one of the estimates, just to take it down to somewhere between three and five million. And then you look at collectively the whole site and rehabbing the whole thing, you're talking about ten or eleven million dollars, and that's in today's dollars. And I, and I'd like to see it in my lifetime. So we'll have that conversation. So the Homestead, what's that?
He said stay healthy.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Stay healthy.
I, I tell people all the time, the only time I feel old is when I look in the mirror. I'm, I'm trying to stay as healthy as I can. So the Homestead Trail, that's set, that's gonna be done, and that's our share, and we're, we're in.
Again, part of that share, the state tells you how much you owe on the initial estimate. So it will vary when we finally get bids in. And then the National Park Service paid for a portion of ours as well.
Right.
So that number probably is a little heavy on what our actual share is, but we'll settle up at the state when completion is done.
Yeah, because that's, that was my understanding, that this park department, we're doing eighty-twenty split, we're doing the twenty of that. But my, I guess my question was, and you answered it-ish, that that's what we're set? Or if the project gets a lot more expensive, are we chasing that up the hill?
The state will tell you according to, it's an eighty-twenty grant with the federal government. They will tell you as the project increases, your project, your portion increases. That's not what they did on Pioneer Trail. Pioneer Trail, when that project got larger, the state covered it.
Okay.
I don't know why or how or what was different then, but they did cover that one, the additional cost there. But yes, so your eighty-twenty split, you're responsible for twenty percent, and National Park Service covered half of your twenty percent.
Okay. So the trail crossing thing on Lincoln, Hannah, I agree with you, I crossed through that multiple times a week, you're a hundred percent right. So. So, um, the ambulance and the fire engine, so I, I get the fire, fire engine thing, I winced at it a little bit, I, but, but I think it's, I, I think it's, in, I think you had a lot of ingenuity going into that, deciding how that was done. Does that leave any money left from what we have in reserves for that? Well, not reserves, that's not the right term, in, in what we have in overpayments.
In overpayments, uh, I believe she's gonna turn you to the right page, right?
We look at debt service.
And, and I guess, so with that, if there's anything left and we're, if we're collectively, if we're okay with that, with the fire truck, why aren't we paying for the ambulance with the remainder of it?
Um, you could.
Because if my math is right, if you add the 835 and the two, and the 450, that's about what we have in overpayment.
I mean, certainly it's an option, we, we look to just do the fire truck, but nothing says you, I believe we could do both of those, uh, through that bond payment.
And, and what do we do with the money that we've set aside for that now? Does that stay within the fire department, does that go back to the general fund, or do you give it to us to spend?
So the ambulance.
Bob always likes that.
You gotta remember, the ambulance is being funded out of the CARES money and out of, uh, the ambulance reserve fund, so the ambulance reserve fund obviously would stay. The CARES money is a little more open, uh, that was some of the first COVID money that we got, uh, we could probably look to see if there's some other way we could spend those dollars at this point, I don't know that they're tied to anything in particular, uh, so that would probably free up those 200,000 dollars.
So, okay.
But, and the CARES money has to be done by September?
Uh, no, that's, and technically, those CARES dollars were spent back in '21, whenever we received those funds, and then we held a portion, um, but a, as far as the federal government is concerned, those dollars are spent, it's, we call it CARES funds.
So we're not answering to them?
No. At this point.
No, not on those funds, in, as far as the audit goes, those dollars were spent as CARES dollars.
Okay.
Yep.
I understand that.
And your debt reserve fund, um, we're looking to end '26 with an ending fund balance of $3 million.
Okay.
The only thing I was.
Yeah, you can do both.
The only thing I would say on the fire engine is we hope that 835 is right.
I do have a PO on for that one, so I, I am hopeful that that is the right amount, but you're right.
I mean, unfortunately, that's been a, I mean.
We've been at it for, fifth, this is year five?
Yeah.
I think, it was either budgeted in '23 or '24, I don't remember which year it was ordered, I'm gonna say '24.
So, so Bob, or Tobias, whoever wants to answer that, people are watching this, why don't you explain that?
Which portion?
The fire truck, that we can't just go buy one, there's, they're not sitting on a lot.
Oh, no, uh, there, there has been a great consolidation in the fire engine builder world, uh, what you've seen is before, there were a lot of local companies that we, you'd go buy fire engines from, uh, those have now all been swallowed up by larger companies, and so, uh, they figured out there was good profit margins in fire engines, and so they actually reduced the number of engines they produce every year and increased the price at the same time.
There you go.
So us, like many others, are simply waiting for our fire engine to come off, um, yeah, they just, they know people willing to pay for them.
We have to pay for them.
You gotta have it.
That's, 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 you've gotta have it, I mean.
Bob, can, can I regress just for a second, because it's still up on the board? We did not receive any of the Brownfield Grant money this year.
Correct.
You've been in touch with an individual that has given us some help all along.
Yes.
Is, is there a possibility that that money will become available on an annual basis that we can reapply for?
Yes, we'll reapply for the Brownfield Grant this year, um, those funds are available every year. The, the issue is a couple things, one, there is a maximum amount of Brownfield Grants you can get for a site, I think it's 5 million, don't quote me on that number. Two, you can only get a Brownfield Grant once per site, so we have to be careful, Dempster's site will carve it up into multiple pieces to make our applications. But yes, we will apply again, most likely the application's due in November.
Are those a matching thing?
No.
And, and we used to look at Dempsters, if, correct me if I'm wrong here Tobias, we used to look at Dempsters in eight different pieces because it was on eight different parcels, but now, we, by the mid-September here, we will have one big parcel, cause we'll, we're gonna own it all. We bought it, we were just waiting for this last piece of environmental thing to clear, we'll file a deed, so we'll, and we'll own it. The, the, but if you look at the last Brownfield Grant that we applied for, we applied for 3.1 million.
Yeah.
Yeah? And we didn't get it, we didn't get any of it, but you look at who got it, and it wasn't communities our size, it looked to, I didn't, it looked to me like they were helping the smaller communities, that, I think they looked at it and went, uh, you can pay for your own. That was my personal view of, I mean, you looked at the community sizes that got it, I, I think that that's where that was. Layman's guess. Yeah.
Any other questions on those? Moving on to the electric department. Electric generation facility, so I know that there's been lots of conversations about what that's going to look like in the dollar amount involved, um, and that's still a question mark, right? Still figuring out what size that's going to be, and how much funding is going to be necessary for that site. So, we have to start budgeting something, we need to start throwing something on for it, so for fiscal year '26, we have a million dollars, and then for fiscal year '27, we have another 2 million.
Yeah, also, I think if it's gonna happen, right? Cause we haven't even, you said when, I'm, I'm gonna say if.
You are correct, that is why we have HDR doing their study right now.
Exactly.
Uh, we're still evaluating all of our options to determine if that's the, the best path to move forward.
Exactly. I just want the public to know that that decision has not been made.
You are correct.
But, but again, I agree with you that we need to put it on as a possibility.
Yep, have something on there. Um, he has two different trucks in fiscal year '26, same as the fire engine, the electric department has been carrying forward these trucks now since at least 2023, um, so again, just supply and demand, and we're hopeful. He did get one of them in fiscal year '25, so hopefully, those will continue to roll in and we can get the last two in '26. And those are just from a cash carry forward, um, no bond issuance there. Substation seven improvements, substation two improvements, the industrial park distribution line and substation nine improvements are all part of that 3.5 million, um, bond issuance, where we saw the bonds come in in '25, and then they'll be spent, um, between '26 and '27 on those projects. Moving over to the water department, um, some water main projects, uh, valve at the well farm, and then the control valve at the well field, um, I believe all of those are coming out of his infrastructure funds, so as we talked about with, um, a $2 increase there, as, um, we continue to see those capital projects come in with the water department, making sure that those infrastructure fees are matching, um, not matching, it, they're always gonna be less, but helping with those capital projects as he continues to move forward with some of those improvements.
Tobias, how do those infrastructure fees work?
So basically, I mean, they're just a monthly fee that come in, uh, but since they're labeled as infrastructure fees, uh, they are obligated then to go towards infrastructure.
Is that on somebody's bill, right?
Yes, yep, I believe on your BPF bill, I think there's a separate line that says infrastructure fee if I'm not mistaken.
It is.
And when you're saying $2 on three different, so you're saying it's gonna go up $6 a month?
Yes, I believe, two dollars for water, $2 for WPC, and then electric, we're still trying to figure out if it's exactly, if it's gonna be two or three, or somewhere in there.
Okay. And what is it now?
Uh, what, water today is two, I think WPC today is five, and electric department does not have one today.
Okay, thank you.
And you pay taxes on that too, so it's not just that, it's your increase in taxes, you're paying taxes on that too. I hate him.
Nobody likes him.
I voted for him, I hate him.
Don't we all, but we need these things, so.
I'll disagree.
WPC Department, we talked a little bit about, um, the grit construction project, so as that moves on from '25 to '26, um, and then lift station number one design, um, we're hoping to start in '27, we didn't touch too much on it, but as you look through this, WPC cash does take a pretty big dip, um, once we wrap up that grit project, so that pretty much wipes out all of his infrastructure funds at that point in time. He's hoping for a lift station number one construction in '28, I believe it's like 1.2 million dollars, so we're hoping that over that fiscal year '27, we can build up enough cash to continue to roll forward with that project as well. Airport, we've talked about both of those already, um, but the T-hanger project and, um, oh, I guess the runway repairs is a different one, what's that word Tobias?
Pappies.
Pappy lights.
Pappy lights.
Um, so that, again, would be a 90/10 split between the federal government, um, and the, the airport.
So those are part of Senator Fisher's money that the airport received, the hangar came in under budget, and so they looked to see what additional things they could do, and the pappy lights were something that qualified, and some of the runway repairs. If you ever want to watch something interesting, type in pappy lights into, and watch a YouTube video, they are the lights that you look at as you come into land, they're red or white depending on if you're on the right glide plane or not.
And you can turn them on and off in your aircraft.
Yeah.
Um, and then in Boswa, we do start landfill closure in fiscal year '27. Another one that, to point out with Boswa, which Boswa will talk at the next meeting when we actually have Boswa here as well, um, but we also have the CND site construction starting in '28.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Tobias, help me with the Boswa thing, I, I lose this, I lose this argument continually, but why spend the $225,000, why simply just don't close it?
At some point, the state's gonna make you close it if you're not putting anything in that landfill, uh, so you're gonna.
Well, can we just put a bucket of trash in there a year and call it good?
We will string along, uh, for a little while, the best we can, uh, but at some point, it becomes cost prohibitive to continue to renew those permits rather than just closing the site.
Okay, and so let's, let's say we close the site today, so the state was last day, can we, do we always own the site, or can we sell it?
I, I assume that you could sell it, I don't think there's any things that you can't, obviously there'll be, you know, some deed restrictions, some of that stuff that goes with it, but I, I think it's, I think you're capable of selling the site, I've not heard anything that says you cannot.
Okay.
You looking for some real estate deals?
I've never had anybody approach me and say, I'd like to buy that when you're done with it, but you never know.
Never know. Um, street department, fiscal year '26 and '27, um, starting construction with the RACE Grant. Heritage Heights and Corral Crossing continue through 2026, again, that was part of a bond issuance. In fiscal year '27, um, we do have a future street project budgeted for a million dollars, so just based on his cash flow, um, and the way that some of those projects pop up, um, it wasn't one that we have a true set project for 2027, but something that they'll, James and Jason can look at, um, and figure out a project to put in there. Um, and then Seventh Street, Arthur T. Monroe Concrete Reconstruction in 2026. I thought there was one more. Um, sanitation department, so again, we, we kinda touched on that, he's a little heavy in '26, just between the roll-off truck and the 11-yard garbage truck, um, he'd like to do both of them, so cash spend down just a little bit with that extra capital, um, and then another rear loader in 2027. I think that's all of them. Any other questions on capital before we move through that? Again, there's a lot of other projects that are included in the budget, those are just some of the high-dollar, um, ones to kinda point out there. So we moved to page 64.
I wanna.
Yeah.
Congratulate everybody on the capital projects and how far out you go with that, I appreciate that, the long-term view of what we need and how hopefully it'll all fit together.
Yeah, we're trying, uh, I think the department heads do a good job with it, realize that once you get past year one or two, it gets a little more fungible, but.
Well, you wanna buy a fire truck five years ago, I mean, you know, again, that's fair, it's not our fault, but I do appreciate the, having the department heads kinda say, and then, you know, kinda spreading it out so we could see it.
So as we get into, uh, ooh, that's me, not Aaron, I almost just said, Aaron, can you move forward?
Where'd you jump to?
Let's see, I'm on 64.
I'm on 64.
You on 64?
Yep.
All right. Taxes.
We're moving pretty quick there.
Yeah. Um, okay, so this section talks about some of the different funding sources, I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I think it's important that we have a discussion on taxes, um, specifically property taxes within the general fund, what we're asking for, um, and what that looks like. So, there's some additional information in here, I'm not gonna go through, um, much of it on these pages, but I did like how, uh, it's represented in here where you can see what the current property tax ask, um, has been in the past, will be for '26, forecasted for '27, and then as you move to page 65, um, that's also showing you a sales tax history, what's, what that has looked like, what we're projecting for '26 and '27, um, and kind of the growth that we've seen there as well. And then again, um, a portion of property taxes can also be used for debt service, so uh, we issued, the general fund issued the debt for, um, the airport's portion of the taxiway reconstruction project, so that will be paid for with, um, property taxes moving forward. And then the other one that usually comes out of that that we don't have right now, um, we can issue debt for public safety debt service, so I think that's something that we're looking at in either '27 or '28, so that's another portion of property tax dollars, um, that we can have for debt service. So page 66 is showing you a breakdown of last year's levy, um, with who carries, um, the most portion of the levy, so it shows you, um, public schools, the city, Gage County, NRD, SEC, ESU, Ag Society, um, and then historical society, society has a portion as well. So just a nice visual on that breakdown. Page 67, let's see, 67, 68, oh, I should've put those in order, and then page 70, um, all kind of relate to each other, but those are giving you what our general fund levy and what our debt levy and total levy have been, uh, from 20, what we're proposing for 2026 all the way back to 2020. Page 68 is showing you what the valuation was for those years and how much it increased from the prior year. And then page 70, it's, I don't like the way it printed, it's a little hard to see, but that's giving you all the way back to 2000, um, let's see, column at the top that says general tax request, so that's showing you what our tax request was, general levy is showing you the different levy amounts, um, debt tax request and the debt levy, and then your total tax request and your total levy, and then all the way on the far right-hand side is giving you the property valuations and how, how much it increased each year.
So this, I know this is for Tobias, so in 2000, Tobias, if you had a $200,000 home compared to a $200,000 home in 2027, our increase is what? He knew this was coming, he had his hand on his calculator, everybody winced at me when I said that.
All right, so between, you're talking what we're proposing.
Yep.
And what we had back in 2020.
There were 2000.
2000, sorry.
Yep.
About $190.
Okay, I, I knew it was in there, I, I was, I was gonna, I was ballparking it, but I, I just want people to understand that we're, over a 25-year period, this is how much we've raised, and it, and it, it's, it's, it's a matter of 15 bucks, 20 bucks a month, it, we just, it, it, we're just not asking for that much. But I was just trying to collectively make people understand. And you did the math way better, way faster and way better than I did, so. I, I was, I made that, I, I was, I knew I was gonna ask that question, and, and I started trying to figure that out myself. I got a little lost, thank you. Thank you.
So, the, the, one that I want to talk about the most as we're on property taxes, if we turn to page 69. So, this is the new state budget form that we use to help calculate what our property tax ask can be. So, in the past, as long as you stayed within your 45 cent levy, and then I believe there was an additional 5%, excuse me, 5 cents that you could take for interlocal, as long as you were within that 45 to 50 cents, you were fine. You could be wherever you wanted to be. Going forward, with the new Property Tax Request Act, whatever it was called with the state, it limits the way, excuse me, it, it limits how much we can ask for in the preceding year, so the percentage that we can ask by. So, on this form, as we walk through it, line one up at the top, last year, we, our property tax ask was 3.3 million dollars. So, that's our starting point as we move through these calculations. So, if you move down to kind of, let's call it line 14, that's showing us that the growth percentage per the county assessor, our 2025 growth value was 3.8 million dollars. They divide that by total valuation from the prior year. We have 0.39% for growth. And we'll kind of get into a second what that means for our calculations. And then we also have an inflation percentage that we can take. That's a number that's calculated based on federal inflation of local governments basically, but that's a calculation that the state provides for us. So, that was 5% this year for inflation, so we could take an additional 174,000 with that. I think the big thing to take away from this calculation is if we were going on, let's say we had an inflation year that was much less than 5%, which is definitely on the horizon, our growth value was $13,000. And if you take that 0.39% into consideration, even all of like our labor unions, all of those are at least a 2.5% increase. So, if you even just comparing those, our largest cost that we know is going to annually go up at least 2.5%, and our growth value is 0.39%. So, I think it's a limitation that we need to can, to make sure that we're thinking about for the future and what that number could look like, because I think that it, it's really going to limit what that property tax ask can be going forward. Tobias, what else, what are some other points to kind of make on that one?
So, when you're looking at the growth rate, that is not the increase in your valuation at your house. That is not considered growth. What basically gross, growth is, is new construction. So, if at your house, you had new construction, you add on a garage and like that, that would be included in the growth rate, but simply your house being assessed at a higher amount because the valuation went up does not count as part of our growth.
How does TIF projects figure in this number then?
So, TIF projects are not considered part of growth because they have not gone on to the tax rolls. When TIF rolls off, then they'll be part of that growth number.
Which will help you somewhere 10 years from now.
Correct.
So, what does the state say? I mean, how are you supposed to keep up basically? I mean, personnel costs, because let's face it, I mean, personnel costs are our biggest hit.
Correct. Just look at the police and fire. This year, the state legislature changed the rules and we have to pay more into their retirement accounts, but then they limit the amount to $13,000 in additional funds that I'm allowed to ask because of my growth.
Right.
How do you sustain that long-term? It's a great question.
I, I'm assuming other, of course, everybody, every community is facing this, right? So, I guess, what does our legislature say or have they? Or have they even?
They cut property taxes.
They cut... Okay.
And they didn't. They, they didn't, essentially, they didn't cut property taxes, but it's just another unfunded mandate. That's, it's here. It's not kicking the can down the road, it's kicking the can in, down to somebody else's road.
Right. So, it's not a property tax, but somewhere along the way, we're going to have to figure out some way to raise those funds, because it is not, our increases are not things that are easy just to drop. We can't drop police or fire or, you know, things like that.
Wasn't it last year that Nebraska City had to dip into their reserves?
Correct.
Population what?
About 7,000.
Yeah. So, that tells you what, if something don't change, you can only cut so much and provide the services, and I don't know, some people understand it and some don't.
Again, when you look at our property tax requests, it's 3.3, 3.8 million dollars in that ballpark. Police and fire, each a little over $3 million alone.
Essential services.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's really what I wanted to touch on, on that form, is just as we can move forward and we think about property taxes, it's going to be inflation. There's, I think that that growth number that we're seeing with the amount of TIF that we use, which is great, being able to put those funds back in the developers' hands, but I, I think that that growth will stay low based on that, or at least just something to consider. When you're hearing 10% increase in valuation, it does not mean 10% increase for growth.
Inflation, what we're seeing right now for next year is about 2%.
Yeah.
As we looked at the numbers the other day. There are some exemptions that are, they're able to take on there. You'll notice with the one we did take was for approved bonds, because we need those funds to make the bond payments, but we did not take a lot of the other exemptions that are available to us. And so, at the end of the day, 3.8 was the number that we came up with, and you see that we left $31 on the table.
Yep.
Oh, and that's, that's maybe something else to point out too. So, in years past, we had an, our unused authority, and that would grow by 2% every year, and it grew no matter what. So, whether you took it or not, just get your 2%, continue your growth, so that if you did have a year where you needed to pull more, you had it available. That's not the case with this. So, if we wouldn't take the inflation amount, if we wouldn't take that 174,000, it's not available to you again. So, I think that's the other limitation that this puts on us, is we have a really great inflation year this year with 5%, but as that trickles down, you can't re-grab that 174,000 again. You have to ask for it. And in the past, it, it used to just be available to you, and now you, you have to ask, request.
And it doesn't buy you an ambulance. And you can't buy an ambulance for 174,000. It don't go, it's a lot of money, but it doesn't go very far.
Well, in a good inflation year is, is bittersweet.
Correct.
And it, we're always going to be behind, so the year the inflation's high, right, is the year that we didn't, maybe not have the money, and then the next year, when inflation comes back down, but we're always looking the rear, 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 and so we get additional funds, and so we're always going to be chasing it up and down.
That kind of wraps up my conversation, to end on a high note. So, again, as we've touched about it, the pages that are pulled out in front of you are a much broader overview of some of those categories. If you look online, you can really dig into some of those lines. If you have questions, please let me know. That's what I got.
Tobias, I got two questions. First, you go way back to page 24 when we're talking about selling the building to pay off the bonds. So, why can we pay off that bond early and we can't pay the other bond early? Is this because you, if you sell it, you have enough money to pay all the bonds off in full?
So, what you're talking about here is paying off the sanitation bonds.
Yep.
And so, the asset you're selling is a sanitation asset.
Okay.
And so, those funds stay in the sanitation fund.
Okay.
Which is then used to pay off sanitation debt.
Okay. I should, I knew that. I should have known that. Should have been able to recover that. So, the other question I have is, as I followed you through on each of the, these departments, we can look at the crunch in the budget going forward. I understand the cash reserve policy that you want to put in place. I understand the reason behind it. Can you help yourself with your cash crunch by not pursuing that quite so aggressively?
I think if you look through, I think most of the funds are probably in the right range today for our cash reserve policy that we're going to propose to you hopefully in two weeks. Street Department's one, that's a little heavy. WPC gets a little light next year, but it's all capital-related. But I think most of them are probably right, kind of what you anticipated. We're, we're hoping you'll approve that it should be.
I want it to be here, so...
Was there a fund, was there one of the funds specifically that you felt that with?
No, I just, you know, we talked about that. We talked about that, and it's a percentage. So, if you want to be at 48% or whatever that is, if you condense that to say 28%, is that easier to maintain that crash that we're seeing in 27 or 28?
I, I don't think the crash is being caused by the cash reserve policy.
I'm, I'm not saying it is. That, I'm just saying that it exasperates it, and if, if...
I, I don't think that it does. I think either way, you're seeing the operating cost chart increasing, so you're seeing the cash go down. It's just at what point do you panic? Do you panic at the 50% mark, the 25% mark, the 10% mark, zero?
I, I've been here when we had $80,000 in cash reserves. I don't panic.
And I have not.
And I don't want to be.
Ask Linda Cook, she said she did it really well.
We'll have a different, yeah.
And I remember asking her, doesn't, doesn't this where you?
See, the thing, the thing about the cash reserve that makes more sense to me is if you put it in a timeframe.
Yep.
Three to six months.
Yep.
Because I look at my budget at home. I've got an emergency fund, so if my furnace goes out, I'm covered. And so, I look at that cash reserve as that emergency fund for the city.
Yeah.
And three to six months seems reasonable. The percentage throws me off a little bit, but I've kind of told these guys, put it in terms of months.
It gets to be a big number though, Bob.
So, yeah, it does, it does. But I also know that, you know, we have some cities not very far from us that are in a lot of trouble right now.
Yep.
And, you know...
And with this, they're going to need more.
Yeah, because some are going to have a zero rate.
Right.
And some are negative, but they balance up to zero. And I think when you saw the projects that you see, you know, 90% of those projects are really capital projects for infrastructure. And infrastructure, without that, we're in real trouble. And so, I, I agree with, with Dana. I think our department heads did really well. I think the move by Hannah and Tobias to say, "Hey, we need, we want at least eight years out," is a great planning tool, knowing that years one and two are going to be different. And I think one of the things that we didn't mention today, but I think it's worth mentioning because I think it's a good move, if you notice the 2027, it didn't say budgeted, it said forecast, because we will be working diligently through 26 to make sure that 27 is in a solid position as well.
Yeah. And I, and I appreciate, Dana was right, and I'll echo that. I appreciate the long-term, you know, I'm a big-picture guy, so, and I, and I know that, we talked to Bob, you and I, and I, Tobias, I, we talked about things that I'd like to, you know, see, you know, that you wanted in the budget. I didn't get them in this budget, didn't get them in the 26, 26 or 27 budget, but I did notice that you have them in there. They may be in 30 or 31 or 33, so I, I do appreciate that.
Yeah, some of those later projects, there's ones that we're trying to keep top of mind.
Yeah.
Knowing that they're coming up, trying to plan for them. Maybe you see the great grant funding come through, the right funding source that can move a project up a little faster, but yeah, try to keep those a little farther out there, but keep them in, in mind that the project's going to get done.
At, at least I, yeah, at least I'm not, I don't feel like I'm being ignored. I appreciate that.
I do have to say, I appreciated the graph on the fund balances, because when I saw 27, I did panic a little bit. It did make me go, don't like that number.
Anything else?
I just want to compliment you on a great job presenting that. You know, when we got this sent to you and I've looked through it on a couple, it seems very complex, and you did a great job explaining it for a simple guy.
Thank you.
Anybody from public have a question about budget?
Calvin, any questions? That is my husband and my son. I'm picking on him for a reason.
You should have read his lips. I, your son, so...
Uh-oh.
No, he's fine.
If, if, if not, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:44 PM.
Second.
Okay, we do have another public hearing.
Vote on that one.
Vote, please. That passes 5 to 0. We do have, the public hearing on property tax request will be on September 15th. However, we have one more hearing tonight, the public hearing for a proposal of considering an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a Community Development Block Grant for a public planning grant to redevelop a comprehensive plan.
So, yeah, this is the comp plan we talked about earlier. Our current comp plan was written in 2001. It was based upon the Beatrice Plan that was from 1992. If anybody's read that one. We did update it a couple times. We added some energy efficiency stuff, I think 2016. We did a few of those things, but nothing substantial. A comp plan is supposed to be kind of a long-term policy or guide to physical and economic development for the community, so that's why it's important to kind of set those long-term goals out there. What we're proposing is a CBG grant. I know that the public hearing, the announcement that we had out there said it was a $50,000 grant with a $10,000 match. I've been informed today by SIN that it is a $15,000 match on our part, and so, again, not horrible. We have seen different proposals out there for a sin, as high as $150,000 to some closer to that $60,000 to $70,000 mark. Assuming that you guys approve the grant application tonight, it'll get submitted, and then we'll wait to see if we're awarded, and if we do, then we'll be like all of our other CBG grants and we'll work through that process.
Any discussion needed? Let's close the hearing.
I move the public hearing be closed at 7:46 PM.
Your vote, please.
I need a second.
I want a second, that Bob.
Okay.
Now, we're going to vote.
All right. That passes 5-0. Let me slow down. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions.
Before we do, we did have another public hearing for rezone, but when we advertised it, we left off one of the parcel ID numbers, so that's why it's being postponed to the next one.
All right, we have one resolution tonight. It's resolution number 7615, executing the application, any other documents necessary for a Nebraska Department of Economic Development Community Development Block Grant for a public planning grant to redevelop a comprehensive plan.
I move the resolution number 7615 be passed and adopted.
Second.
This is a resolution for the public hearing we just had about our comp plan.
Your vote, please. That passes 5-0. Okay. Ordinances, there are no more. Close with the public forum. Forum, anybody here for the public forum? Come on up.
Jane Neider, 398 South 25th. I want to compliment my grand niece Hannah. She did a wonderful job. And I'm glad I came tonight because I've learned a lot, and I want to thank the council for everything they do. It's a, it's a big job, and I do think I understand a lot more about the budget now that I came. And all the little things that I have here sound pretty petty, but I will mention them. One of them was, I saw this post online about the naming of the two new developments by the two new schools, and I think that was made clear to me tonight too, when you say Heritage Heights, it's like, ooh, Heritage Heights, where's that? But if it was named Lincoln Place, you would have a little better idea. I assume that's a done deal. I have no idea where Coral Crossing came from. I think Padlock Place would have been a lot better. So, if that could be changed, I think you ought to rethink that. Then there's a house on Jackson Street that's completely engulfed in trees. You can't even see the house from the street, and I don't know what part of city government takes care of that, but if you don't have enough money to take down Dempster's, you probably can't take down its house. But it certainly is a weird situation. Oh, and then one more thing I'll mention today, and I, I suppose this is a dumb, a done deal too, but taking Highway 77 down to one lane just does not seem like a good idea to me. I drive that a lot, as I suppose most of you do, and you almost always have a car beside you, so I can't imagine what that's going to be like to go down to one lane. So, those are the comments that, oh, I did want to give the city streets department a pat on the back. I called, we deliver meals for the senior center, and there was, we did... We deliver, uh, meals for the senior center, and there was, um, we do, do some on a gravel road, and there was quite a hole in the road. And so I called, and within two or three days, the hole was fixed. So I was very impressed with that. So that's why I'm here, and I'm glad I came the night of the budget.
I, I really can't speak to the three items that I have here, but I will tell you, thank you for being here. You know, we, we, as a council and mayor, sometimes get a little frustrated because it is a big job to put the budget together, and everybody does a good job. And tonight, we have you here and nobody else, and it's an important part of the city to do that. So thank you for being here. Anybody else? If not, uh, we don't have any discussions tonight. Uh, the next regular city council meeting will be September 15th, 2025, at 6:00 PM, right here in the BPS Administration Building Room. Mr. McLean, I would entertain.
I have one thing here. On your miscellaneous, September 15th meeting, I, we, you guys are going to have a big day. That's a big night. You're going to talk, talk about this again. You're going to have all these conversations, and I'm not going to be here. Uh, it's my mom's 90th birthday, and she should have her sons with her. So I'll be with my mom, and happy birthday, Peggy, so.
The right place to be.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move the meeting be adjourned at 7:51 PM. Second.
And your vote, please. And that passes 5-0. Thank you very much.